So that you are at peace with God and in fellowship with man. You clearly understand that yesterday ended last night, that today is a brand-new day and it's yours. You know that he who is the greatest among you must become the servant of all, and that's in quotes because that's biblical. You are pleasant to the grouchy, courteous to the rude, and generous to the needy because you know that the long-term benefits of giving and forgiving far outweigh the short-term benefits of receiving. You recognize, confess, develop, and use your God-given physical, mental, and spiritual abilities for the glory of God and for the benefit of mankind. Lastly, you stand in front of the Creator of the universe and he says to you, "Well done, thou good and faithful servant."
Dodgeball, you see it in our future. It was a weekend drop-in activity. Principal said all he needs is the paperwork.
Dave, we've already talked about it because I'm in charge of Parks and Rec.
Looking good?
Yeah.
Loving it. I need you for thirty seconds.
Oh, wow, good. I am watching you.
Say it for me, I got you. Lisa and I give each other massages on a pretty regular basis.
We do.
I have a pair of these that I keep at her office. I'll get you first. Bob, have you not been a recipient of one of these?
I don't think so.
Oh, my gosh.
Don't remember it, anyone?
These, by the way, I do mark it on the side, so anybody's interested, track me down. Thank you for the time and I would like to, oh, make an announcement. I'm planning to leave town for the summer, second Saturday in May. My hope is to be able to get a place in Lake Tahoe and work and live out there the entire summer. At the end of the summer, if I'm still welcome in that town, maybe consider staying on for the winter or maybe come back. But I would be, between now and then, I'd be interested in being on the bicycle committee. As an added cyclist, I like to have some input in that. And I hope everybody else believes in this town and where we can go. The Lincoln quote about litigation might be the one that was most important to me. Let's not litigate. Let's move forward in a way that for the town benefits and we're not wrangling with each other. So, that's my prayer for the year.
Okay. The next item is what I have to say. And I had a little time to look through these magazines just when there was no activity. And, you know, I found some gold in here that I think I'd like to share with the rest of the commissioners. There are six things. This is September, October of Maryland Municipal League magazine, and this is a December issue. And this is a card that they've passed out with the legislative priorities of the Maryland Municipal League, one of which is electronic posting of legal notices. We live in the electronic age, so it would save a lot of expense and a lot of paper if we used electronic means to disseminate town information and encourage the people to use electronic means to get their information. Now, what is in this is, wait, I'll just put my place here. Okay. Okay. One of these is financial accounting for small water and wastewater systems. Second issue is making sure it all adds up. Okay, that's the first one. Got any written loan writing? You use your website to grow jobs and tax revenues. And can the chair say no? I've learned something. I can say no. And the other ideas in the December issue, which is this one, is are you ready? Are you ready to consider cloud computing? I don't even hardly know what that is, but anyway, I'm sure some of you do know what cloud computing, especially Dave, he can explain it all to you if you don't know, right? Dave?
What's part of us Wi-Fi computing?
And I know I was gonna buy a notepad and it was whether it was Wi-Fi or cloud computing, but I never, I just bought another one like this. And, well, the third thing, is the majority always right? I recommend that you read those if you haven't already read them. So, that's my input for the night. Another thing, I believe we need to revise the minutes of both the November 18th and 19th executive meetings as the minutes do not comply with the requirements of the Open Meetings Act. The Open Meetings Act says that in any executive meeting, you have to announce any decisions you made in an open meeting. And in the minutes that were approved at the last meeting, that wasn't done, or the 27th of December. I picked up the wrong, what is it? Yeah, the 27th of November, town minutes. So, I ask you to look at that and check it out. So, with that, we will continue. Staff reports, since Calvin isn't here, we'll have Chief Peterson to give his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna keep it brief because of rapidly not feeling well, I think I've been affected by most of the colds and so forth that are just breaking down. But I, again, tried to modify this report that you all have. I had received several complaints that no one could understand what I gave them in the past. Once I gave them the legend, they still had trouble interpreting what it was. So, I tried to break it down a little bit more to simplify what is there and show what we actually are doing. As you see, the type cases, we had 409 calls for service from the last meeting to today, seven drug investigation-type cases, three thefts, two motor vehicle accidents, one recovered stolen, and 11 warrants and summon services. Then it goes into individual stats, which would help you all understand exactly what we do. In the special events, we did add additional patrols for Christmas and New Year's Eve. And we had approximately 36 hours of court time that the officers had. With that being said, that's my report. If there's any additional questions, feel free to answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners report. We'll start with Mr. Kirkley.
The only thing I have is over the last several weeks, I've had some emails reference to traffic complaints. I forwarded this to the chief. Some people that are here have sent those to me. In the future, they probably could go directly to the chief because I just end up forwarding them to Chief Peterson anyway. So, he has those.
Over the...
The cars are wrong way, the...
The cars are the wrong way and so forth. I assigned two officers to specifically look into those. The vehicle that's been, that has the out-of-state tags on it, that's been here for approximately two years. We've located one. They have been given the MVA notice, which is required. We have to monitor it for 45 days before we can take any enforcement action. And we're gonna do that with all of those tags that are from another jurisdiction that's been here for longer than that period. In addition, we also have written citations for those vehicles that we've found to be parked in an illegal manner. That includes the timed parking and the facing the wrong direction. Anything that the officers are coming across now, they're directly reporting all of that stat right to me. I have individual stats if you like this.
Okay. Commissioner Marion?
Yes, my statement's gonna be brief. I had a, I spoke with the October Watershed and the Center for Watershed Protection. Our public comment period for Triangle Park has ended. We will be moving to the next step, which is gonna be providing the state with our grading permit, and then we are gonna be ready for our general construction permit. I wanted to say special thanks to our town clerk, Rhonda. She found copies of the permits that we needed and got them signed and delivered to DWP, DPW very quickly. In the next week or so, I'm gonna have another follow-up meeting with the October Watershed and our landscape architect, as well as our town administrator and the Center for Watershed Protection, just to get a task report of where we're at. So, that is it. Thank you.
Who are you meeting with?
Center for Watershed Protection, the October Watershed, our town administrator, and the landscape architect.
Can I be a part of that?
I would be free to discuss that with you after the meeting.
Well, I can't, why can't you answer me right now?
I would be free to discuss with you after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Just wanna say that it was nice to have a break and be family for the holidays, but it's gonna be back here also. And I don't really have much of a report except to say that there was a progress report, progress update meeting yesterday regarding the wastewater treatment plant construction. And at this point, the project is about 28%, 28% complete, and they are estimating substantial completion in 460 days. That's my report, and Happy New Year.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ron?
I have a short report as well. I did contact a, an additional concrete contractor about the sidewalk on the corner of Mount and Queen, where it goes around the corner, at the yield sign. I have not had an opportunity to discuss that with the town administrator, but expect to see some progress on that soon. Also, we did get a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign up at the beginning of Maple Heights Drive, which I was glad to see went up. I want to thank our employees for doing that. I have talked to the State Highway about their working on Main Street later this month or early in February, where they're going to be surfacing the drainage pipe underneath the roadway. They're going to be concreting it so that it doesn't wear away so quickly. They expect that work will take about a month. I also, when I was talking to them, asked about changing speed limit signs within the town limits on the state road. And they said, the gentleman I talked to said he wasn't in charge of that, but that I could call back and get the person who's in charge of that. So, that's on my agenda. The reading of the old minutes. I've had three or four people volunteer to help with that during the past couple of weeks. I have been tied up. I've had a funeral and I've been sick the last few days, so do expect me to get a touch with you this coming week, asking for your help. And I do have actually discs, diskettes, computer discs with the minutes on them that will make it easier to go through than leafing through the books. Hopefully, if you all have computers. If you don't, I do have spare, and you're welcome to come to my office and work on them. That is the end of my report for today. Thank you. Happy New Year to you all.
Old business, any old business? Any new business? You know, life is a learning process, lifelong learning process, even at my age, and I've learned a lot more in the last year than I ever knew I had to learn. Okay. Mr. Moomy says he has a question mark. Okay, you pass, pass. Oh, Karen Long, Maple Leaf, 201 Maple Leaf. Tom Heine. Jane.
Well, I'm glad the bike trail thing is moving forward because one of the reasons I don't like is because there's nowhere to bike around here that I feel safe. It's one of those things, I don't like sharing with the roads at all. I'd rather be on a dedicated trail like the Rails of Trails. It's just one of those things. Anything that we see coming, obviously, we have blood stores gone. We got the other, the old Martin stills, still, used to be filled up. Is that, keeping in mind, anything that's healthy, welcoming, allergy-friendly? And also, thank you for getting aboard with computers.
Your what?
Cloud computing.
Yeah.
Is when it's saved to the internet, basically? And then you can retrieve it later.
I know basically what it is. I just don't know how to do it.
It'll help you. Those guides will walk you there.
Well, you can teach me to use this thing.
Well, it's a down-sun me.
Okay. Beth Griffin. Justin Westbrook. No. George Walker. No. Okay, now, God. Okay, Jeff? If you have anything new to tell us, Jeff. I learned in my books now, when I was studying, that it has to be, or it has to be something new. Whatever you've already covered, that's gone.
I'm doing good here.
I am. I think I brought up articles.
I'll give those back, man. Take a quick peek at those, like the MML magazines. I'll give you back your copies, I want to see them real quick. I appreciate you bringing those to our attention. Thank you, sir.
I'd much rather have your presentation in mind.
Well, I'd be saying, I think this thing works, but...
Ten minutes, Bobby.
I even haven't set up one.
I waste my time.
Six minutes. No.
Ten minutes, Bob.
I like to share, but not some things we don't share.
If I were to have lunch with one of you folks and wanted to wait for the chosen eatery, you stopped in an ATM and withdrew a more than adequate amount of money for the occasion, then as we went on our way, we came upon an old woman begging on the street. She was quite obviously in a very needy state. I, who with sincere compassion for her plight, asked you to assist this woman with a portion of your recently acquired money, whereupon or whereupon your heart-pardoned refusal, claiming to need the money for your own family's need, I produce a pistol and require you to surrender a quite reasonable portion of your money, reasonable in my opinion, to assist this woman. Would you agree I had committed a crime? Don't face any question, in spite of my compassion for the woman. Now, let me consider this a little different. While in the company of five other people, same situation transpires, with the exception that everyone agrees with me that it is reasonable that you surrender that same fair portion of your money to the needy woman. And by our insistence as a democratic majority, I may be saved with distasteful necessity of producing my pistol. But of course, if need, force is available. Does this seem just to you? Or would you concede to the democratic majority and surrender this fair and reasonable portion of your money? Now, let me take this one more step. The majority enlist the agents of government, first legislators, to establish the appropriate laws, and then enforcement agents to collect taxes from certain folks whom we might call the productive, to assist those deemed needy. Amongst those down on their luck might be included banks, corporations, and car companies. And so, we compel them to share their prosperity with those less fortunate. Is this all right because laws are passed and government annoys it, annoys it as a right? If I might really share a few excerpts from a small book, which I forgot to bring you so I can show you how small it is. It's less than 100 pages. It was published in 1850, written by Frederick Bastiat, called simply "The Law." The safest way to make laws respectable is to make them respectable. When law and morality contradict each other, the citizen has the cruel alternative of either losing his moral sense or losing his respect for law. These two evils are of equal consequence, and it would be difficult for a person to choose between them. The nature of law is to maintain justice. This is so much the case that in the minds of the people, law and justice are one and the same. Nothing can enter the public treasury for the benefit of one citizen or one class unless other citizens and other classes have been forced to send it in. If every person draws from the treasury the amount that he has put in it, it is true that the law then plunders nobody. But this procedure does nothing for the persons that have no money. It does not promote this quality of income. The law can be an instrument of equalization only as it takes from some persons and gives to other persons. When the law does this, it is an instrument of plunder. With this in mind, examine the protective clearance, subsidies, guaranteed profits, guaranteed jobs, relief and welfare schemes, public education, progressive taxation, free credit, and public works. You will find that they are always based on legal plunder organized in justice. But how is this legal plunder to be identified? Quite simply.
You're about at the end.
Ten minutes, Bob.
No, six.
Bob, you can't arbitrarily change the rules. It's been, you brought it up, 10 minutes.
I said six at the beginning.
You don't get to change the rules, Bob.
I do, John.
No, you do not. You are not a dictator in chief. You are the one that brought up the 10-minute rule. You're being hypocritical and trying to play the dictator.
Well, the times...
And the 10-minute, well, I've seen the 10-minute rule in writing.
Okay. Well, my prayers there disagreed with the...
Well, I would ask this council then to censure you because you're not following the very rules that you brought to light. We had a three-minute rule when I got here, and I was ignorant, didn't know any better. You brought up, you brought to light the 10-minute rule. So, don't... I'm a big proponent of freedom of speech, Bob.
Okay. Thank you. That's it. It was six minutes. I announced six minutes.
Well, I've looked at my clock.
Well, I've just looked at my watch and tried to get this darn thing to work, but it wouldn't, but...
That gentleman relinquished his time. Are you still seeing his time? Okay, I got another six minutes, Bob.
No, 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 no.
Oh, yes, yes.
Well, next time, you can have it the next time.
I'm finished.
Now, please.
I'm finished.
I'm finished.
Well, I'll have to order, order times. Rule you out of order.
Rule me out of order? I don't care. I think you're out of order. You bring up the, you bring to light the 10-minute rule, and then you're gonna hypocritically go against it when it doesn't suit your purposes.
Either you're quiet, or I'm gonna ask Chip to escort you out.
Well, Chip gonna have to escort me out.
Chip, I'm sorry, but...
Is it a 10-minute rule or a 6-minute rule in writing?
It's a 10-minute rule. I've seen it in writing. He's the one that brought it up.
I'm sorry. I announced that it was six minutes.
No, you're, you're, you're wanting to hear him.
I did too.
Everybody wanted to hear what he had said.
Why don't y'all get him out of here? Y'all can do something about this. He doesn't deserve the position he's sitting in.
I was calling you to censure. Speak up about the... He brought up the 10-minute, he brought to light the 10-minute rule, and he's not following his own...
He makes it up either three minutes, six minutes, or 10 minutes. It depends on who is speaking.
You all sit and laugh at him the whole time you're sitting there. None of you like him? He needs to go back where he's from. We need somebody here like this gentleman here or the one back here. That's who needs to be sitting. Y'all need to get God back in this. God is nowhere in this town.
Jeff, you're...
I did bring it both forward to change the time limit, but to my knowledge, it's never been changed. As far as I know, they still...
Ten minutes.
Jeff, I don't see the reason why you need to go. I don't.
Well, I agree. Are you gonna impose me go? Well, then, let me finish. I'm sorry, Coach, but I've lost my place, but...
Begin at the beginning.
No. Oh, the last sentence I read was, "You will find that they are always based on legal plunder organized in justice." But how is this legal plunder to be identified? Quickly, quite simply, see if the law takes from some person what belongs to them and gives to other persons to whom it does not belong. See if the law benefits one system at the expense of another by doing what the citizen himself cannot do without committing a crime. If I can't do it without committing the crime, but the government can do it, it's not legitimate. Then abolish this law without delay, for it is not only an evil itself, but also it is a fertile source for further evils. If such a law is not abolished immediately, it will spread, multiply, and develop into a system, which is what we have in this country now. Legal plunder has two roots. One of them is human greed, and the other is false philanthropy. Now, legal plunder can be committed in an infinite number of ways. Thus, we have an infinite number of plans for organizing it. All of these plans as a whole, which are common aim, legal plunder, constitute socialism. The most popular fallacies of our times, and let me remind you that this book was published in France in 1850. It is not considered sufficient that the law should be just. It must be driven promptly. Nor is it sufficient that the law should guarantee to every citizen the free and inoffensive use of his faculties for physical, intellectual, and moral self-improvement. Instead, it is demanded that the law should directly extend welfare, education, and morality throughout the nation. This is the seductive lure of socialism. And I repeat again, these two uses of the law are in direct contradiction to each other. We must choose between them. Now, I could easily select close to another dozen quotes from this one small book, "The Law," to help me make what I hope is an obvious point. You might remember that after Mr. Long... You might remember that after Mr. Obama was elected in two thousand and eight, Newsweek magazine published an edition on February sixteenth, two thousand and nine, that declared on the cover, "We are all socialists now." What they unwittingly declare is that we are now a nation of thieves, because socialism is nothing more or nothing less than evil, seeking respectability under the pretense of law. I had a couple further quotes, I'll quit there. The reason why I bring this stuff up is my concern. Our federal government's done, nursing corruption, it's pathetic. And it's not just the recent administration, it's been going that way, it's been trending that way since the sixties at least, if not from since Roosevelt. Our state government, I believe, has done too. It's here on this level and the county level. Because I used to never be involved in local politics, didn't think it was important. But this is the only place where we're going to be able to re-establish honest, just, and courageous government to fight against the corruption that's being foisted down on us. Now, this little bike plan, my hesitation right away is this, they bring plans down which they don't fund. They stick the cost on us. They're, they're making, we are trending toward the enslavement and the loss of our liberties, and that's why I, I feel compelled to try to address these issues. And I'm sorry for being upset. I even apologize to you, Bob, but you are wrong, and you really should be censured for trying to stifle free speech. Myself for one, I'm not going to tolerate it. You want to have a fight, I will fight over my life for free speech more than anything else. Thanks very much.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak, David?
One second chance. Am I on the pocket? Let me know. First of all, this is, some of you've seen...
You just happen to have that with you, right?
Play this. Now, there's recently been a birthday, and I think we ought to all sing to Rhonda. So...
Happy Birthday.
It's been going a while, but, less than ten days ago, right? Less than ten days ago. So...
For celebration.
We're not going to talk about the number, it's a nice number.
She's thirty-nine.
Thank you.
Happy Birthday to Rhonda.
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, dear Rhonda. Happy Birthday to you.
Thank you. Well, thank you for your contributions. I was advised that these meetings are meetings for business of the town, and it's not a political forum, really. So, you know, we have a little bit of a disagreement, and I was being guided by what the other commissioners had said. They were very vocal about that. And, you know, so I would ask that you make a motion that we, at this moment, set the time that we're going to allow people to go.
I don't think he was done.
Did they put pause on my, my time while you were talking? I'm not...
Okay.
I know, the thing is, you all were giving up much of your evening. I mean, this is a major sacrifice on your part to come out and to be involved in the town process, so you all are to be greatly committed for your commitment to come out and, you know, believe in the town, because we, we really need to do that.
We need your help.
All right. Maltby Davenport Badcock wrote these words. And he's the same guy who wrote "This is my father's world." So, he wrote this. He said, "Be strong. We are not here to play, to dream, to drift. We have hard work to do and loads to lift. Shun not the struggle. Face it, 'tis God's gift. Be strong. Say not that days are evil, whose blame and fold thy hands and acquiesce, oh shame. Stand up, speak out, and gravely in God's name. Be strong. It matters not how deep entrenched the wrong, how hard the battle goes, the day, how long. Faint not, fight on. Tomorrow comes the song." So, that's Maltby Davenport Badcock. So I think we have a lot of decisions to make over the next month or so about the future of the town, and I hope that everyone is...
Optimistic.
Yeah. So, thanks for all that you do collectively around the table, and the offer still stands. I will wear something along these lines, I'll get some assistance, and we will serve a very nice sit-down dinner for each and every one of you. I would love to do that. Anybody else be willing to give up a couple hours to serve the, serve this group up here around a nice table while they talk about the...
We're getting the leftovers?
Yes. And it'll be some nice food. It's a nice... Anyway, think about that. So, that's all I have. Happy New Year.
Okay. So before we adjourn, we'll make it an order of business to have the commissioners set the time. I don't have any power to do anything, so let the commissioners decide how much time they're going to allow.
It's already set, Bob.
Well, it, it can be changed.
It can be changed, but it's already set.
And Mr., Mr. Rotten wanted to change, so...
That's true.
Because we're all in the town, and out of town.
It's been discussed.
Okay. Anyway, it seems that nobody, but I thank all of you for coming. It's, it's the important thing that we get input from you folks. We serve you. You don't serve us. And I want to make that very clear, that my reason for being in here is to try to make this a better town and more cost-effective, you know? We're getting out of hand as far as costs are concerned, so we have got to slow that down somewhat. So, is there any other person that would like to make a comment?
I make the motion we adjourn.
Okay. It's moved to second and then again.
I second.
Okay. It's been moved to second. All the favors are on.
Aye.
Thank you for back next week for helping play well.
Two weeks. Two weeks.
Sir. Jane. Thank you for keeping a quick face. I saw that.